Call to order the regular meeting in McAllister City Council Tuesday, December 17th. We do have a quorum and we have the McAllister chapter of FFA, J.C. McKelvey, and Madison Griffin here to lead us in the pledge and the invocation.
My name is Madison Griffin with McAllister FFA, and if you all please stand for the pledge allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united by God, indivisible, infinite and just as strong.
I'm J.C. McKelvey from McAllister FFA, and if you would please bow your heads. Our heavenly Father bless this day in the meeting of this council. Give them wisdom in all their choices and decisions that they may lead this city in the path that you desire. Guide their direction and help all to put you first. Remember all those in need physically and spiritually. We will give you the glory and praise for it all. I ask in the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you. Cor, would you call it all, please?
Yes, here.
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 Harrison?
Here.
Pritchard?
Here.
Mayor?
Here. We are on to citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Residents may address council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda. Residents must provide their name and address, and council requests that comments be limited to five minutes. We had no one sign up. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to address, seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed under consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted in one, by one motion. There will not be separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. The agenda tonight consists of A, approval of minutes from November 26, 2019, regular meeting in McAllister City Council; B, approval of claims for December 4, 2019 through December 10, 2019, or anyone like anything removed. We'll take the motion in a second to approve. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Brown. Any discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We will move on to agenda item number one. Consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign change order number one from Sunrise Construction LLC, the amount of $15,630.50. This change order is for an additional, is for additional earthwork and height of grounded riprap on the west side of the Earthen Canal added for public safety for the 10th Street Canal Bank stabilization project. Mr. Stasiak.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm handing out a couple of pictures to show you the 10th and MacArthur Canal project that is currently very close to completion. During the construction of this project, it was determined that there was not a lip on the edge of that canal. That canal requires a lip. It doesn't require a lip. If it's within five feet of the pavement, it does require some form of lip. This is within seven feet of the pavement. It was determined that this is a safety issue. That street does not have any curb and gutter on it. Residents could back out of their driveway possibly if they weren't paying attention, back over into the canal as a possibility. It included a six-inch lip. If you look at the second photograph, you can see where that was constructed along the edge. Also required additional riprap and some additional work off of the 10th and Grand Eerie. Staff is recommending approval of this change order. This project is almost completed at this point.
Any questions? Councilman Smith?
What's a lip do to prevent you from backing into the canal?
You're gonna feel it. It's gonna, it's gonna force you.
Is it raised?
Yeah, it's raised up. It's like a curbing?
Yeah, it's like a curbing.
It's just a safety, kind of a retaining safety area.
Any other questions? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Brown. Any discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number two. Consider an act upon authorizing the mayor to sign change order number one from Sunrise Construction LLC, in the amount of $2,720. This change order is for additional concrete floor replacement four inches wide by thirty feet, thirty-four, excuse me, four feet wide by thirty-four feet long at site number three near Elm Street for the canal mitigation phase one project. Mr. Stasiak again.
Mayor, members of the council, in the pictures that I get handed out a few minutes ago, the third picture in your packet shows the heaving of the floor in the canal wall, or in the canal floor. As you're aware, we've been doing mitigation in these canals now for several years. We're doing a lot of bracing. We're also doing work on the canal floor, keeping it from kicking out. And during our, this, this portion of the canal wall mitigation project that's been awarded by council, it was determined that we had a panel that had heaved and it needed to be replaced. It was, it was danger. Water was actually flowing underneath, underneath it. We needed to get it out of there. So this is to, that change order in the amount of $2,720 for that concrete panel floor.
Any questions or comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion in a second. Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number three. Consider an act upon accepting the bid amount of $39,812 from Built Right Construction LLC and authorize the mayor to sign the notice of award for 745 West Adams Sewer Relocation Project. Mr. Stasiak once again.
Mayor, members of the council, in the middle of the night at this location, we had a collapsed sewer line. It, this sewer line actually crosses diagonally across the property. It is under a storage unit, a, several very large pine trees, and also part of a building. That sewer line doesn't belong under there. Unfortunately, that's the way it was constructed. This was determined to be an emergency. We have an open pit at this location where we're relieving that sewer. We went through the bidding process. We, Infrastructure Solutions was able to obtain the necessary easements to go along, around this property through the alley. This project was bid out. We had two bidders, Sunrise Construction and Built Right Construction. Our recommendation is to award the, the bid to Built Right Construction in the amount of $39,812 to relocate this eight-inch sewer line and add three manholes at the location.
Any questions, comments? Councilwoman Harrison?
I've got a question. When we look over here on page nine of our MPWA, there's an amount on here that I'd like to ask about if it's pertaining to the same thing.
This is not. This is an award of a contract. None of this was sent out.
Oh, it's not? Oh, okay. All right. In this bidding process, you said there was only two, two people that, two companies that put in for a bid?
Correct.
Okay. And this was the lower bid on it?
Yes, no.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Take a motion in a second. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard? Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, the motion carries. We're on to agenda item number four. Discussion and update on the financials. Ms. Swift again.
Mayor, council members, tonight, we're gonna review over the financials that you have in your packet that you get each time. The first one is the general fund at a glance, with 41.67% of the year. Both revenues and expenditures are below. They were up over last year. MPWA revenues and expenditures both under budget as well. The next report or graph that you see is the general fund sales tax revenue at a glance here with November sales, sales tax being reported up over last year a little bit, but we're still under budget, not meeting our budget on as far as sales tax. The next one is use, use tax, again, reporting through November. Not quite meeting our budget is there as well. But up, it is a little bit over from last year.
Where do you show the budget on those two? Use tax?
Use tax, well, that's actual, as far as, I don't have the.
It's not on the draft, right?
Right.
Councilman, a good rule of thumb for use tax for the city of McAllister on a month-to-month basis is if it's linear, it's $160,000 per month. We do have highs and lows of that. We see much more use tax received during the Christmas months, but on average, it's 160 a month.
How'd you draw the linear line?
I don't know. Is it supposed to be a regression?
How do you have that? Is that trending?
Yeah, but this is, this doesn't show budget. This just shows actual receipts for the three years. We do not have a budget line on this.
Yeah, just actual, sorry. The next graph you'll see is the MPWA revenues, the water sales, which include residential and commercial up over the last two years. And then the water districts, I mentioned last month that we were significantly down due to some water change, meter changes that were taking place in some of our water districts. We have seen that that has come back up, and we anticipate that probably continue to increase there as well. Your last report that you have is a mandatory report, which is our treasurer's report, which allows us to provide you with our cash on hand. Any questions?
Thank you. We are on to agenda item number five. Consider an act upon accepting the annual city of McAllister audited financial statements and independent auditors report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Ms. Swift.
Busy today.
Paying you by the item.
Had to get all the nerves out, you know. Tony tells me it gets better with age, so. So previously, we talked about our audits, and before the audit and finance gentleman, the committee that had, was here in attendance, they did give us a letter of recommendation, recommending that the city council approve and accept the, the audit that we just completed.
Mr. Stasiak, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'd just like to add a couple of comments if I could, mayor and council. To bring you back to where we've, where we've come from, 10 years ago, when we started this journey, this city was behind on their audited financial statements or their audit reports. We were behind three years at that point. We immediately got three audited financials done that year. There was a number of significant findings in each one of those audit reports. We were able to correct those, take their recommendations, implement them, and since then, for the last eight or nine years, we have had no audit findings whatsoever with this city. So I just want to congratulate our accounting department, CFOs, all the people that have been involved in this over the last 10 years, and what an outstanding job that they have done, and they've done for this city, along with the award-winning financial statements that we've had for the last five years now, Tony, four, five, through the CAFER. They've just done a stellar job in transparency and making sure that everything is done correctly here at the city of McAllister, and I just want to congratulate each and every one of them. So, thank you.
I just, are there any questions or comments? I take a motion in a second to accept. Motion, Councilman Smith. Second, Councilman Brown. Any further discussion? Cor, would you call it all, please?
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries. We're on to new business. Any matter not known that, or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of post in the agenda in accordance with section 311.9, Title 25 Oklahoma State statutes. Mr. Stasiak, do I have any new business?
We do not, mayor.
Let's go to city managers' report.
Mayor, members of the council, just bringing you a quick update on Harvest Park. As you're aware, we received a $5,000 AARP grant with that. Our goal was to have some amenities with that grant installed by the end of this year. Those, some of those amenities are now on site. We've received them, drinking fountains, benches, et cetera. They'll probably be installed later on this month or sometime early in January, so you're gonna see some other changes to Harvest Park down there. We hope in the spring also that PSO will be able to install that new metal pole on the corner, and we'll be able to clean up that corner and everything. So that's coming along very well. At our next meeting, first meeting in January, through our comprehensive plan and our action plan presented to the council, our six action plans presented to the council, one of them was our sewer plant analysis and bringing in an expert organization forward to help us analyze those sewer plants and give us recommendations on what we need to be doing in the future with those sewer plants. We have identified that agency, that engineering firm, and they will be coming forward at the first meeting in January with a recommendation from staff to move forward with them. The other thing I wanted to bring up is there were three really crucial, in my opinion, crucial projects to be completed this year at the city of McAllister. Number one was the 30-inch water line that's on the dam out of Lake McAllister. Number two was the 20-inch water line that by, to bypass the old water plant below the existing plant. And the third one was bringing the secondary, second water source online. I'm pleased to, to tell you that council has approved the completion of that 20-inch water line that bypasses the old water plant. That, that project is completed. Item number two is the 30-inch water line that sits on top of the dam. We're gonna bury that and then re-tie that into the raw water pump station. Yesterday, during a scheduled shutdown, that, that 30-inch water line that's previously been installed underground was actually hooked up to the pumps at the raw water stations. So that is nearing completion. You know, we tend to see at this community, the couple of things that go, go wrong. Yesterday, things went right, and it was taken care of, and there was no impact to the city. We, that plant was actually down yesterday, I believe from 8:00 AM till almost 10 o'clock last night, and there was no implications whatsoever. A lot of coordinating efforts that went on. The second one is the pumps have been pulled at the, the pump station, Coal Creek Pump Station. They're being rebuilt, and that project is moving forward. So we've come a long way with those, what I consider to be three very crucial projects for this, this community this year. Those will be wrapped up hopefully early 2020. So, the only other thing I have is, gonna be on vacation next week. I would encourage each and every one of you, if you need me, please call me. All five of my children are coming for Christmas, and if you need something, feel free to call me at any time, okay? And just wanted to meet, wish each and every one of you Merry Christmas, and it's been a pleasure to work for you this year. Thank you.
We're onto remarks and inquiries by city council. Councilman Smith?
I just wanted to wish all of you Merry Christmas and our community Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thanks, Mr. Stevens. Councilman Brown?
I echo the same thing. Merry Christmas, and if you're available tonight, go out and watch the Buffalo's.
Councilwoman Harrison?
I'll just echo the Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays. I would like to thank, thank Jay Henry's Barbecue for hosting my Christmas book giveaway for the young people at Ward Five. And as most of you probably know, I've made a decision not to file for the election of Ward Five City Council, and basically, it was, these are the things that I had in mind. It didn't have anything to do with any of you, so be glad about that. All right. It was a, the four-year term is really was my primary reason. I didn't think that I could do a great job at the, at the level in which I thought that Ward Five deserved, so that was my main reason. Then I also factored into family commitments, personal health. I'm still actively employed, and I have maybe some possible other goals. So those are the reasons that I'm not filing, so I just wanted to let you know that, and thank you to everyone for being so gracious.
Councilman Pritchard?
Yeah, I have a question for the city attorney. It's in regards to this email we got five days ago on agenda item number one. So, kind of my first question is, will you further explain your idea that this, the proposed, the amendment to the ordinance was too, well, the, the issue was city charter section 2-12. Can you explain that idea a little bit more to me?
What is the question?
No, this is in regards to your email, agenda item number one. This is from last council meeting on Tuesday. You sent the email five days ago, but the, so you have, I think you have, from reading this email, I'd like you to explain it, but I think you have two issues with the action the council ultimately didn't take, but was potentially gonna take. And the first one I want to know about is this provision of the city charter 2-12 that states, and this is quotes from your email, "No ordinance shall contain more than one subject, which shall be clearly expressed in its title." So will you tell me what you're thinking there?
Well, my opinion was that, that the ordinance dealt first with the adding of the additional use with supervision or additional review. That was the main thrust of the one that the staff proposed, but during the action, it was added that this be done, taking away the further review in there, and for whatever reason, in my opinion, was that that dealt with two different subjects. One was substantive, one was procedural, and so I felt like it dealt with two subjects in the ordinance provision in the charter says that you will only have one subject in per ordinance. And so my opinion was that if you intend to do that, it needs to be set, treated in two separate ordinances, one procedural, one substantive. And I would say the first one would be the substantive adding the provision that the staff proposed, and the second one would be in the motion made, in the passage that you do away with the further review.
Well, okay, so if I follow, so you're saying, because I think what the staff proposed, what was on the agenda is to add the cottage district as a use after review.
Right.
And then the motion that we voted on failed was to, instead of adding it as a use after review, to add it as a permitted use.
Do away with the after review.
Well, the after review doesn't exist.
Well.
I mean, currently, that.
It's provided for in the ordinance. I mean, it's provided for in the code.
Well, okay, I don't, maybe I misunderstand. I don't think, there's not a clear understanding, I don't think, right now between me and you, because, and maybe I'm wrong, I don't know what the minutes say, but I thought we just voted to, to not remove the whole use after review process, but allow the cottage houses as a permitted use. Does that make sense? I mean, I don't know if that's what we did, but does that make sense?
The motion from, and.
If I made, the motion that I made. The motion I made was to approve it with the removal of use after review.
Well, okay, so let me ask a question that you can't answer, or the, I think, if we do this again, and, you know, it's posted, and the, the hearing, and then the motion is to add a cottage, cottage development to the residential district as a permitted use, does that create in your mind a conflict with this, this provision of the city charter?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, next question, or next issue, so.
And, and I could be wrong about saying that the ordinance, but it was the motion to adopt the ordinance that included the elimination of after review.
So the other issue here is this, what I'm gonna call a planning commission review, and this comes from the city ordinance 62157, which says essentially, the planning commission gets to review and make a proposal or a recommendation to the city council. So I've, me and you discussed this via email about the appointment of the stormwater administrator, and in that exchange, and I think, this is what I think, but you, I think you agreed with me that that provision, 62157, only applies to that particular article of Title 62. Do you recall that exchange?
I think so, and I think that's correct. I think it only dealt with that one position.
Yeah. Well, if it was correct in that case, then it only deals with that particular article, which is Article II of Section 62, then why does the planning commission have to give, why do we have to ask the planning commission?
Recommendation? Yes. Well, I, I read the two together, that, that you would not take this action without a, the input from the planning commission.
Well, but, I mean, what I'm saying is, Section 62157, I think it only applies to that.
You're referring, I don't have those provisions in front of me. I don't have the code book or whatever, so.
Could you, could you further review this, and, because I mean, my position is, and I, again, I think we discussed this previously, but 62157, the authority to change or repeal provisions only applies to Article II of Section 62. It does not apply to Article I.
Whatever the.
I think there's.
Use after review.
Well, it doesn't apply, this ordinance that we were amending is in, I don't think it's in, what, I think it's in Article IV of 62. I don't think we have to, I don't think this council has to ask the planning commission for approval for any change.
Recommendation.
Other than changes to Article II, which is the administration and enforcement section of 62.
Okay.
So if you would look at that.
Yeah, I'll be happy to look at it again, and you're just saying it doesn't apply to any other provision other than.
Yeah, that article. Well, the, the language of the ordinance says it only applies to the article, and I think article is, I read it literally to mean only Article II, because.
Well, I think.
62 is many, it has a number, almost 10.
I think the, you know, whether, whether it's included, I think the motion, if you intend to do away with the after review, I think you probably ought to do it in two different ordinances. Thank you.
And, and just to tag on with that, we didn't, we didn't table that item. We just agreed to revisit it. So if there was an ordinance that anyone would like voted on at the next meeting, it's, it can be, it can be proposed for the agenda along with, that way you can, we can do the public hearing as well, so.
Your motion was to bring it back at the first meeting in January.
To revisit it, to, to discuss it.
Well, I assume that we would have the same ordinance again, if that was the.
Well, yeah, it could be that same ordinance, but I'm saying that if someone wanted to do another ordinance as well, they would be able to do it, so.
Present it at that time.
Yeah, so like you're saying, if that's, if there were two, if there were two that were necessary, it, it would be able to be addressed at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Can I ask a follow-up question, if I may, to, to what Councilman Pritchard just asked?
I think so. I think so.
So if, if I'm understanding correctly, then, Mr., so if I was to want to do the same thing I did last time, you were stating that I'd have to push it back before the planning and zoning?
Well, I think, yes, I think that, and I will take a look at what Mr. Pritchard has asked me to do.
And is that simply because I wanted to remove language?
Well, the, the point of the opinion was that there were two problems. One was the ordinance dealt with two subjects. The other one was that, that it required, the procedure required a recommendation from the planning and zoning commission. And so I thought your motion did away with that, with that requirement, that it only asked the council to approve it without further review.
So my understanding, and of your legal opinion, is that any kind of change or amendment that's something that comes to us from planning and zoning, if we amend or change any ordinance, we have to push it back to them to get them to review the change?
No, I think.
Why is this critical in this situation?
Well, because I think your motion was to do away with further review. That wasn't the, that was not the ordinance that was presented by the, by the staff.
But I didn't rewrite the ordinance, so I just removed one part of the ordinance.
Well, you were, in my opinion, we were adopting an ordinance that included two subjects. One was to do away with the further review. The other one was to adopt the ordinance by adding a.
Wasn't, wasn't it the same ordinance? Wasn't it the same ordinance, though?
Well, it was the same ordinance, but it encompassed two different subjects, one procedural, one substantive.
I understand. Maybe I have to say it bluntly, then, I don't agree. And I don't, and I don't mean that like insulting my.
Interpretation, that's your interpretation.
Exactly. Maybe I'm, I'm not understanding that.
Well, I think rather than, rather than change the procedure that the planning and zoning commission have for adopting that use, you've eliminated that, that procedure.
I, I feel like I've eliminated one part of the ordinance. I didn't eliminate the ordinance or rewrite it, though.
Well, I mean, the, the procedure is provided for in the ordinance.
I, I feel that.
You've eliminated something that was provided for in the ordinance.
But isn't that exactly what we've done with every ordinance that comes up here that changes, though? I really don't want to delay this any longer, but I'll just, let me ask this.
We're kind of getting past the inquiry into the debate, so.
Yeah, well, I just, I don't understand what makes this ordinance different from other ordinance that have come before us, and we've amended and then approved, and then it was fine. That's what I'm getting at. I don't understand.
I think, in my opinion, the ordinance that, that was proposed and was moved for adoption included after your motion, if your motion was adopted, would include two subjects, and therefore would not have been in keeping with the charter provision. And I think that in order to avoid that, then we need to have two separate ordinances, one to do away with the procedure and one to do the adoption of the new use.
Thank you.
Let me just make sure, Councilman Pritchard, you were done?
It's not pertaining to that. I neglected to say that deadline for filing for Ward Five is five o'clock tomorrow, December the twelfth. I'm sorry, December the eighteenth. Thank you.
You're welcome. We're on to mayor's comments and committee appointments. I will blast through this then.
Oh, I think.
We, we have, we have discussed creating a committee to, to work on the action plan items from the, the comprehensive, comprehensive plan, and I would, I would like to ask Councilman Smith, Vice Mayor Stevens, and Councilman Brown if they'd be willing to serve on that committee.
For the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, the action plan.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, that, that, that committee will be, that will be the committee. You guys can set your meetings all about yourselves. Quickly on Mr. Stacey on East Pierce, where we, you know, we've had all the trouble with the road, the, the neighbors have contacted me over there, and they're very happy when we grade that. They just asked if we could possibly grade it, grade it a little bit more frequently, because it's, it gets, it gets washed out pretty quickly afterwards.
True.
We, my last thing is, want to thank everybody up here for the, for the jobs we've done throughout the year. I think we've had a pretty, pretty good year for the city of McAllister, and I think that's in large part because of everybody up here. We don't always agree, but we always move forward, and I thank you guys for what you guys do, and Merry Christmas. With that, we will recess the council meeting. I take a motion to convene as McAllister Airport Authority, a motion to include approval of minutes from December twentieth, excuse me, December tenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting, McAllister Airport Authority, confirm action taken on city council, agenda item B five and adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, Councilman Brown, any discussion? Corge, Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, I'd now take a motion to convene as McAllister Public Works Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the December tenth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting, McAllister Public Works Authority, confirm action taken on city council, agenda item B one, two, three, five, and adjourn. Councilman Smith, Councilman Brown, any discussion? Corge, Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, I'd now take a motion to convene as McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, motion to include approval of minutes from the November twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting, McAllister Retirement Trust Authority, approval of retirement benefit payments for the period of December twenty nineteen, confirm action taken on city council, agenda item five, accepting the annual city of McAllister audited financial statements and independent auditors' report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty nineteen, and to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, Councilman Brown, any discussion? Corge, Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and the motion carries, I'd now take a motion to adjourn. Motion, Councilman Smith, and Councilman Brown, any discussion? Corge, Colorado, please.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Pritchard?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes, and we adjourned. Thank you, guys.